Alright, I'd like to talk about the Wyreka Planning Mission on the seventeenth, thousand twenty-two, to order. Clean rise for the blank loop.
I.
By diligence.
Through the one of the United States of America.
And the Republic of the British and one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Brien.
Yeah.
Co-Chair Rolzinski.
Here.
Chair Osborne.
And then you do have to read off Amy and Brian and just say that they are absent.
Okay. Commissioner Devlin, absent. Commissioner Fernandez, absent.
Thank you.
You're conducting general public comments. Do you have any potential public comments at this time? Okay. We will skip the public comments. And staff members, your comments, does anybody have anything? No. Last of this one.
Yeah.
Um, agenda. All items on the agenda are still routine, if there's some issues or something, we'll remove something or comment on an item, uh, if they can. Can I get some approval of the minutes from hell on July twentieth, thousand twenty-two?
Yes.
There was eleven minutes, so the regular meeting held July twenty, twenty-two.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Amy, vote.
Great.
Public hearing, uh, let's see, two thousand twenty-two, that Golden Eagle Charter School is conditionally used.
Alright, thank you. So the city of Wyreka Planning Department received an application for conditional use permit. The Golden Eagle Charter School will be moving their facility from their current location to immediately across the street into the old Napa building. And so places of assembly are typically churches, schools, and community centers. They are a conditional use in most zones. And so conditional use permits cannot be moved from one property to the other. It stays with the singular property, so they are applying for a new one to do the same operation across the street. So they will be operating a charter school resource center at five twenty South Main Street. Um, they'll utilize the existing commercial building. There'll be no expansion at this time, nor changes to the parking lot or other features. Um, the only pieces on the exterior that will change is a possible building color change and then the sign change. So they will be taking down the old Napa sign on the building and replacing it with a Golden Eagle Charter School sign, which is a condition of approval. Uh, they will have approximately seventy students and ten staff members. They'll operate from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. They will have some late night events for parent-teacher nights or other special events. And there will be minimal activity on the weekends from just faculty and support members, but no on-site teaching during those hours. Not all seventy students will be on-site at one time, uh, so it will be throughout the day. So moving through the conditions of, uh, the findings of condition to issue a conditional use permit or from our new ordinance that we have approved and enacted. And that begins on page seven of your packets. And so the, uh, we went through and took a look at it. It is allowed within the general plan and the city zoning code for that used to be there without any issues. Uh, we are recommending a series of conditions of approval that are on page eleven. Um, some of those are standard approvals that we include on all conditional use permits. Um, the only ones that are unique to this circumstance, uh, is just that they cannot exceed the seventy student and ten, ten staff member unless they come back for additional approvals, or if there's any major changes to the building itself. Um, they'll be coming back to see what their operations are. Um, but for the most part, it's a very minor, um, change. Uh, one of the things that is unique to this one, as well as condition number five, is we are requiring the circulation of the parking lot and ADA spaces to be marked appropriately and posted um, and maintained according to the motor vehicles code. So what this does is it mandates, I did go and take a site visit, the arrows, so there are two entries to the parking lot. And since they will be dropping students off, this is just requiring them to put the directions of the arrows so that people can circulate well on there. And that's extra important for the Highway Three project the next couple of years that, again, Highway Three won't get to them until next summer. But still, it's good to have that circulation well signed and marked on the parking lot. I kept that broad to give them the option of whether they want to put up directional signs or just do the, um, parking lot marking. Otherwise, uh, all of this is other standard language about maintaining landscaping and the use. Um, and it is a class one exemption under SEQA, which is an existing facility because there'll be no changes to the building. Uh, and the building can handle the, uh, change. Uh, in your packets, attachment eight is the proposed resolution. I did send an amended version out and there's an amended version available at the podium for the public to review. Um, we had the wrong conditions of approval in there. There were about thirteen and that was from a previous project. Um, it was a template that was copied over. And so, uh, for the recommended motion tonight, it's recommended that you motion to approve the amended resolution. Um, but those are just the conditions that are listed on page eleven. So I'll open it up for questions if you have any.
Yeah, let's see. Pretty big action. Uh, you're on, can you give me dash on this left like once, still twenty-eight or?
Which number do we have for this resolution? We usually don't fill in the number till the meeting up because if you have multiple, we have that situation with the Turi Street and the general plan updates got flipped. So we, we just hold that for the number.
Alright, this is again a question, comment. And the usual problem is often parents dropping off children and, uh, down the street, it could be, um, a flaw possibly. If everybody turns a foot box, which obviously is not going to happen. It's, uh, it's always a problem, missing the parents dropping off children.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it is difficult to prevent people from doing that out front without red curbing or preventing anyone from parking or loading there. Um, but I have worked with the Golden Eagle Charter School in the past professionally and, uh, we have talked to them about the pickup-drop-off. Um, and I did talk to them about this one. And so what they will do is they will tell their parents and there is a side door to the building. And so they will have, uh, individuals there to meet and greet the parents and make sure they flow through the parking lot, which is substantial in size.
It's gotta be better than their other.
Correct. Yeah, the current, the current location does not have any pull-through parking for them. So this would actually increase, um, the safety for that area.
We have many problems, has many problems with the locations they're at now.
Mm-hmm.
That I know.
Mm-hmm. And we did notice, um, so just to go back really quick, uh, so this is required to be noticed per government code section six-six, or six-five-zero-nine-zero, which means it was in the paper a minimum, uh, at least ten days in advance. We usually do fourteen. Um, and then a letter was sent to all properties within third, three hundred feet of this location, which would include a majority of the properties near theirs. And we received no comment, so we assume that they're doing okay at their current location. And actually, this will improve safety as well because you can actually pull into a parking lot.
Nope, I don't have anything else. On the road construction down in that area starts, it's gonna be a rough.
Yeah, we're all seeing, we're all seeing what's happening to the, uh, south side of town right now.
Yeah, I heard about today.
Yeah. Yes.
What's happening in the sense?
They got it all tore up, right?
Yeah. That will be, um, the next three years of our lives.
Alright, I will open it up to the public hearing. Yeah.
So you will, you will have to come up to the mic just as we record.
Thank you. My name is Paul Mc. Um, so only concern especially the traffic and safety. Um, if there should be, uh, something like they cannot, uh, uh, pull on the side of the road and, you know, absolutely no dropping and loading and unloading there. And it, it should, it's going to be a little bit of, uh, um, traffic congestion because if people, even to pull into the parking lot, they have to slow down. And, uh, you know, everybody has to come from behind and it's going to be, so some kind of management of that would be very important.
Thank you.
And you.
Uh, Felicia.
Yeah.
And then you'll just have to verbally close the public hearing. Great. So one of the options you have for, for the comment is you could amend that condition of approval. Um, we can put that pickup-drop-off will only occur within the parking lot. That can be a condition of approval for the permit if that's a concern that you would like to put in there.
Sounds like a good idea. It's mainstream.
You're getting pretty, pretty bad in the next few years.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
You guys wanna do that? Okay, so.
Okay. So I'll recommend to the, the commission is, um, post-approval of the amended resolution, um, condition number five. Um, we'll just have an additional sentence that says, um, pickup and drop-off of students shall occur within the existing parking lot and not on Highway Three, um, Main Street.
Alright, can I give? Augment?
So this is PCR two oh two two.
Uh, yep. Dash zero five.
Zero. Uh, recommend that the resolution for PCR two oh two dash five. Resolution, the planning commission of City of Wyreka approving the conditional use permit for the Golden Eagle Charter School and adoption of a class one existing facilities exemption under the California environmental quality.
May I recommend as amended, since you have amended that? Thank you.
Second?
Well, second it.
All in favor?
Alright.
Amy, vote.
Thank you.
Full business, wrap for the housing.
Alright. So this is, uh, free form at this point. So, uh, we, we did a presentation at your last meeting to kind of introduce some of the key findings that we found for the housing element, and I can, uh, do a brief overview of that. Um, mainly what we're finding is that the housing prices for the city of Wyreka are extremely high. And so currently, we factor that the median house value so far, um, with a thirty-year mortgage at a three-point-five percent interest. Um, you would need to maintain a hundred and ten thousand dollar household income, uh, to maintain the payments for a house like that. There are no industries, um, that would pay an individual that amount, uh, which means that you have to have at least two incomes to afford that type of house um, or home within the city limits. Um, and then, uh, some of the other key pieces of data, sixty-five percent of our owner-occupied housing um, are individuals over the age of fifty-five, which means that those individuals are not opening housing stock for younger families to move into. One of the reasons that we got from our stakeholder interviews is that there are no downsized units with a single floor for people to move into with ease. Um, especially as people age, they happen to have, they could have, um, mobility issues as well as other health concerns with steps. Um, and so that was one of the things that we were asked to look into for the housing element itself. And let me pull this up. Actually, I'm gonna grab the copy. Some of the constraints that we have, uh, within the city are mainly around our non-governmental impact. So again, um, the cost to build, um, is actually fairly, uh, straightforward across the state of California. So in terms of looking at that for our situation, the city, that is not necessarily a high barrier to the current housing market. And with the current influx of grant funding for housing, that's something we can alleviate is that cost for construction, um, with those pieces. Uh, let me go through. Uh, one of the pieces we did see in demographic changes, our, our main population changes are in a high increase in the eight-to-twelve-year-old category as well as the twenty-five-to-forty-year-old category saw a significant increase. Um, people between forty-one and fifty-four or fifty-five, uh, saw a pretty significant decrease. Um, those within the fifty-five and older range have been steady over the past eight to ten years. Um, but that, that basically puts the median age for the city of Wyreka at about sixty-three years old, which is our, the second youngest in Siskiyou County. And so going back through, some of the things we talked about are some guiding principles. And so this was information that we got from our stakeholder interviews and public input, as well as my input to the consultants, which is trying to provide a variety of housing, um, in the next eight years that is, uh, diverse in terms of cost, design, size, location, and tenure to meet housing needs for all economic segments. Promoting housing for special needs groups, uh, which are, uh, elderly aging population, persons with disabilities, including developmental, large families, farm workers, uh, female-led households, and persons, um, in need of emergency shelter. And so the city of Wyreka is higher than the state and national average for persons or households with a person with a disability. So we're sitting at about twenty-point-three percent of our households, how, includes someone who has some level of disability, whether it be physical, mental, um, or social. And so those are different things we need to take into account when providing new housing in the future. And then initiate reasonable efforts to preserve, conserve, and enhance the quality of existing dwelling units and neighborhoods. Ensure all persons, uh, regardless of race, sex, culture, or, uh, age, marital status, or physical handicaps, have choice of housing locations without discrimination. And then pursue public and private resources to promote diverse housing opportunities and sustainable development and energy efficiency for new residential and existing housing stock. Um, so mainly today, I hope to go over the goals, policies, and programs that were, uh, proposed within the document itself. And so one of the main goals that we had is accommodating the seat, the, the city's regional housing needs for all income groups and types. And you'll see there's a lot of different policies and programs we're offering. Some of those are state-required, which what we did is we put a moniker of a small bear next to those. Um, those we have to have in here, so we cannot take those out. The ones without the bear, though, we can amend those, we can take those out, we can add to them, um, based off of your input. And so we wanted to make sure there were a lot of options here for us in the next eight years to try to accommodate our housing needs. Since this draft has gone out, uh, to the public, uh, we did have, we do have a couple of recommendations for changes already. Let me make sure I get that up. One is around adaptive reuse. And so adaptive reuse is when you take a vacant or underutilized building or lot, whether it be commercial or residential, and really focus on redeveloping that infill lot for housing. And so, for example, the old ShopCo building, using that as either mixed-use development, which includes both commercial and housing, or changing that into a fully housing development. Um, and so trying to use what we have available. And so we're going to be introducing a new program to goal number two, policy three. So amendments for adaptive reuse to include the increased flexibility of those zoning regulations to encourage adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized commercial buildings for housing and adding some specific language around that. Um, we're also recommending, uh, a program seven-point-four-point-three under goal seven, which is amendments, uh, in the zoning code for by right of conversion of existing motels and hotels to dwellings. And so that was something we heard from multiple stakeholders that we interviewed was that we do have certain hotel motels that are currently under contract with Health and Human Services to serve as homeless shelters or shelter for people who have been displaced by disasters. And so one of the things that we're seeing is becoming popular is some of these motels and hotels are being given the ability to convert into, um, apartment buildings. And so all they would need to do is some very minimal building changes, um, to meet the building code for a residential unit. And so we are going to be recommending a program where the city goes in and amends that in to allow people to do that. Um, so we are also working on a Home Key project, which would convert, um, a motel into a homeless shelter. Um, to help with that piece, it would be a higher standard homeless shelter where people would be allowed to live in those units for up to two years. So it's not the typical homeless shelter you think of in the past where it's people with very, um, high drug usage or, um, severe mental health issues. Those would be in what we call a low-barrier center or a high-service homeless shelter, which is the typical homeless shelter you may picture. Um, but we're now understanding that, that to address homelessness, we need a variety of different steps within the housing kind of cycle for that. So we understand some members may need to go to that low-barrier shelter to, you know, become clean, get a hold of their drug usage, and then get into a safer, more stable living environment for a year or two to start, um, either doing work, work programs, um, continue their counseling and drug programs. And so the Home Key project that we're looking to promote and working on right now would also include social services for them. So it would not be, you get an apartment, you're on your own, good luck. It would be partnered with Health and Human Services and Behavioral Health to continue their journey to integrate back into the community in a, in a thoughtful way. So that program has been added for the hotel motels. Um, table two-point-one of the elements, uh, we are gonna have to do some quantified objectives to meet some state objectives. So we'll be adding those to some of the programs of showing, um, if we implement this program, here's how many units we believe that we could get in housing from those. And that's just a change in the state. Um, as we do that, the really fun part about doing this is the state regulations have all changed this year. Um, so we're having to, uh, adapt very quickly to some of the state regulations that we did not have to before. So we're going to have to add a couple, couple of different changes, um, during this review process.
That's four bears.
Yep, a couple more bears. Well, it's not so much more bears, it's, uh, we actually have to quantify how many new housing units we think we can get with this program or how many we could preserve. Um, and so it's, uh, that's new for us. We haven't had to do that for each program yet. Um, but it's not necessarily a bad thing. It's a good thing to know, especially if we go into wanting higher growth for the city. Um, one of the unique circumstances, and I maybe have brought this up before. The city of Wyreka's infrastructure is excellent. It, meaning that we have the capacity to handle hundreds of units of new housing. So we are not limited by our infrastructure. In my professional experience, this is the first small city that has ever been in that situation. Typically, most cities have a cap on development because their infrastructure has not been increased or developed in a way that has included capacity. So at this point, in terms of growth, population change, the only thing limiting this city is political will. So for example, one of the goals in here is to provide workforce housing. That was something that came up, um, a lot within our, uh, public outreach in our stakeholder interviews, in the open houses, um, in conversations with people is we have about three hundred to three hundred and fifty job openings right now. And one of the most difficult things, uh, employers have is they cannot find housing. And so. Yeah, put that out there. NorCal is looking for people. Yep, uh, the hospital is a big one too. The casino, especially with their hotel, um, improvements are actually having to build, uh, temporary housing on-site of the casino, just to house it for their workers. So there is a huge need, and we have the infrastructure to do it. It really is just the city council and this, you know, yourselves as well saying, we do want to encourage growth. Because at this point, there has been no clear direction given to city staff for at least quite a few years now that we do want to support growth. And when I say that, it's not a bad thing to not grow. Um, that is a choice. And so what I'm, what I'm putting in front of you guys is actually, we have a lot that we can work with. If we want, I believe we could do two hundred workforce housing in the next eight years easily. And so that is the goal that we put into the program and the goal for workforce housing is two hundred units in the next eight years. Um, I think we can achieve that in the next three.
I'm surprised that the amount of rentals have gone down the last five years.
You, you can't find anything. It's very, very difficult.
Added for rent sign in my window on, in the window of Yama for over a week and a half. I want everyone to have.
Like I said, if you reach out to the employers, they will put someone in there.
For sale now, so. I was gonna rent it, but I couldn't believe it. I thought, like, put that up there, we say, you're gonna be swamped.
Is it on the top?
No, right across from the park.
Oh, I'm serious.
No, I'm serious. I, really, the biggest thing is it's all based on the employers. And so one of the things we've been doing is the employers have been contacting us. They're like, if you know of any housing available, even our own employees here, you know, we have a couple of openings. Um, it, it's very difficult for people to find that. And so that goes to, uh, another point too, is we do have a couple of programs in here of the city improving awareness and support for housing like that. Maybe that's something we assist landlords with, either having, um, I've seen a couple of cities invest in an online platform for landlords to post housing specifically to get that word out, and it's hosted by the city. So that is something that we can do if it, if it's something that's helpful to filling those vacancies and helping with our, our workforce housing issue. Um. Yeah, the, the hospital actually previously approached the city to build several duplexes on their own property to house their workers. Same thing for schools. It's a, it's a very common thing now to see school districts use vacant and underutilized land. So for example, this property here that has the large lawn, it's very common now for school boards to say, they partner with cities, they build housing that's specifically for school teachers. Because again, either it's affordability issues with what the current stock is, or they just cannot find any. And so in the housing element itself, we did do an assessment of that. And within the four-month period that we were watching a couple of different websites and contacting landlords, um, there were only two rental units the entire time that were open and they were immediately filled within a week. Um, and these were during the, uh, late spring, early summer months. So again, you know, that may be something from a landlord perspective, like knowing that you put that out and didn't get any applications. That may indicate to us that we need a better, more efficient way of getting those vacancies out. That could be an issue too, because a lot of people may not want to go through land management companies or property management companies. Um, but going through, like I said, going back to the bigger thing for your discussion, um, what I'm hoping to get out of today is what do you like about the goals and policies we're putting forward? Are we on, on the right track? And, you know, I think generally, what are your attitudes about growth? Because that's gonna be the big question is how, how much do you want to grow if you do want to grow as a community?
I don't ever not remember anybody that hasn't been for growth. It's always sad, yeah.
Okay.
I don't see how, you're gonna have homes built with the cost, because I read, what's that whole book, the last week? They've over three nights, but. But anyway, uh, it costs of a home, but it says me, four, five hundred forty-eight thousand, build a fifteen hundred square foot home, which include all the the bees and everything, it's, yeah, that's what it says there, it's really, that's why they're outbuilding.
So.
I don't know how you're gonna build homes.
So what we have is the, the state of California is putting out a lot of money. So we just got the first, uh, notification for the REAP two-point-O program, which is a state-funded program. So the minimum award is a hundred thousand dollars, the maximum award is five million. And so it's available for the city to apply for those dollars. And so we're drafting projects right now from this, basically. Um, and going in and going, okay, well, the city will apply for this as long as we build X number of units. And they, the interesting thing with California is they've changed it. So it is affordable housing, but now they're allowing moderate income as affordable housing, which they had not before. And so going to our moderate income levels, it will fund housing developments for individuals making, I believe, between twenty-four thousand dollars a year to fifty-five thousand dollars a year, which is basically, in a sense, a, a middle management position. That is a majority of city employees fit into that category.
How's the funding works, say a builder wanna come in, build five, six homes? They were twelve hundred square.
How do they get the money, right?
The city would apply for it and then dole it out.
How do they dole it out based on?
Right, how does it, how does that work?
So basically, you know, there's several ways we could do it, and we haven't, we haven't refined the program recommendations yet. But there's several ways you can do it. One of the things is we could partner with a master builder. And so a master builder would basically go on contract for multiple years with us and we would go, okay, we're going to apply for this now. We would like to build fifty units on this parcel with this property owner. And we want them to hit these minimum marks. We want ten low-income units. We want twenty moderate units, and then the other units can be market rate. And then basically, the master builder then basically works with the city on the applications. And then we get the grant that pays for everything, and then they go in and they build those homes for us. Um, in terms of smaller-scale developers, so if someone wanted to come in and build five to six quads, um, that's something we could do as well. So you don't have to necessarily even do a master builder agreement. You could put out an RFP for any builder who wants to build it. And we basically go, okay, here's what the project is that has been approved and funded. We're now looking for builders who would like to do this. Here's the timeframe that we have. Um, here is the budget for each one, and then they basically come in and do that. Um, it'll be interesting because then we get into the property management portion of it. Some property management companies may do it. So the city themselves are not the developer. We basically apply for funds and then dole them out in that fashion. So we would basically just continue to do requests for bids, like we do for our infrastructure projects. So what we would do is we would do all the planning, we would do all the SEQA, we would do all the engineering, so all the upfront permitting work. And then we would basically throw it out there and say, who would like to build this for us and do a competitive building, uh, bidding process?
Basically, they're paying for all the fees that are associated with building in California.
Some of the master builders will pay the, like, diff. Some of the master builders will pay the like diff fees, development impact fees, connection fees and things like that. Some of the grants will cover that as well. And so the, the pro of going with one master builder versus uh multiple smaller builders is a master builder usually has larger funds available in capital to them. To then pay the city's uh development impact fees and things like that. In the case of the smaller builders, we would probably have to request a grant that would cover those fees for them. And so there are multiple ways that we can do it. It really just kind of depends on um the project itself. And so one of the other things we're recommending in here too, if you look to support some of our smaller or mid-sized builders who may not. Have the ability, training or capital to do a fifty unit. For those, we have a couple of different recommendations and the goals around accessory dwelling units. One of the things a lot of cities are doing now is they will work with an engineer. To get plan sets and basically we'll get four different options for ADUs, which is the accessory dwelling unit or granny flat cottage cottage house. Um, and then basically a property owner with a single family home can come in and go. I like option number three. The plan's already done. You don't have to pay an engineer. You would then just pay the building permit fee and then you would build it. And so that reduces some of the costs associated with it. So we have a couple of different recommendations for that. The other one too is the adaptive reuse. Ordinance that we're recommending as a program to maybe someone who already owns a building and then all they have to do is come to the city, apply to. Convert it into the house, some housing and then reuse that space.
How about the land that the city owns? This, I don't know where all it is anymore. Has any of it got the streets, utilities anywhere if you want to promote that first where a builder can get on right away?
Yes, actually, uh, we do have. A goal and policy in here that we will develop a list. It's actually came up yesterday. So uh, the city will develop an inventory of city-owned sites for residential development and mixed-use development. Citing uh three major categories, ones that are vacant. Um, and available with utilities, sites eligible for upzoning to increase those. Um, and then offering that program. And then there is another one in here. I was just reading about surplus land.
Was there anything you could put out to let builders know that you'd like to get some going on that now it's all ready to go?
Yep, that's basically, so under goal number two, program two point one point one. The city shall complete an inventory of city-owned properties that are no longer needed for current or foreseeable future public operations and are in excess. At the end of inventory identifies excess city-owned properties, the city will commence the process of surplusing and disposing of those. With the priority given to housing development. Properties will be made available for affordable housing to the maximum extent feasible. So. We could with the sale say, hey, if we do sell this to you, um, we do wanna see. X number of affordable units and this is the threshold that we would like to see them at. The city could do that. It does not require them to do that in this. And then the city shall encourage other entities of other public entities within the city to inventory excess properties and make them available for housing as a priority. So it's also working with the county to surplus theirs for housing as well. And so we'll maintain a list of this every year and we will review that through planning commission and city council. And basically make that publicly available. And then again, like I said, review them. So. If we do have a property, for example, ten acres. Has all the utilities, everything's good to go, but it doesn't sell. Then we can at least ask the question of why is this not an interesting property? What's wrong with it? We do have a couple of other programs in here that says that the city will go through and make sure that they're environmentally safe and sound. One of the projects we have ongoing now is we have an open brownfields assessment grant. So we can go to properties that we suspect could have environmental contamination. And we will clean them up before we give them to other developers so that. We work through the EDC on some of the grant, but it, the city actually manages a big portion of that right now as well. Yeah, they work through a couple of cities on that. So it's kind of a rolling thing. We have a very good relationship with the Department of Toxic Substance Control, DTSC. Um, and so they, they're a part of this as well. So if at any point, it's the same thing for historic building. So say we go to a historic building downtown, there could be an apartment in the second floor, but it is older and might have asbestos, lead paint. The uh brownfields funding will pay for that uh environmental remediation. And so maybe that will open up more units in the downtown on the second story. By having us come in and assist with that. So there are a couple of different, but yeah, we did put the program in here to prioritize our excess lands for housing.
List right now, if a builder came in.
We will put that together, yes. Yeah, we do have to do a vacant land inventory every year regardless. So we have a list of all of our vacant land and all our city-owned vacant land.
I, I knew of some of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, an acreage five, ten years ago, but I don't know what's current along anymore.
Yeah, and so some of them, so what we have to do as a city is we have to go through the Surplus Vacant Land Act. Um, and so we have to allow a thirty to thirty-five day process of putting a property out for public entities first. Um, and there's priority given to different programs in California, whether it's open space, recreation, housing are kind of the three big ones. Um, and so what this program would do is it would compel us to do as many properties that are in excess through that process. So that they're ready to go. So some of our vacant properties may not be ready to go right this second. They have to go through that process first and we have to do reporting to the state on those. But what this would require is that we go through that process, make sure they're available every year and that they are a, available for developers on our website at City Hall. And if people call and are interested, we would be able to just pull it up.
But there's a lot of builders around this area that aren't building. But all they've been doing the last five years is buying up existing houses, revamp and flipping them because they say it's too expensive to do any kind of building. So I think we got, you got a lot of builders together, went over some of these programs. Where you can get something started in the near future rather than one or two years from now. You might get some people interested, some builders interested in it.
Yeah, we're trying, what we did when we went through here, our intent was to offer as many programs and policies that would. Be available for an individual wanting to build their own house, all the way to a, a master developer building a fifty to a hundred unit complex. And when I say complex, it doesn't have to be one building. It can be a whole subdivision. What we're actually seeing in housing and what people prefer is a kind of a mixed housing type subdivision. Um, and so master builders will come in and do that as well. So. It doesn't even have to be all rentals. It can be for sale and then uh the affordable ones are deed restricted to be a certain amount for fifty years. Is, is what the program is for affordable housing. Yep, that is the state minimum. Yeah, there are some cities that go much higher than that, but it's difficult to go over fifty years because the lifespan of a home. Because ideally after fifty years, that's probably gonna need some significant improvements. So. So you don't wanna lock it into a low income and then pigeonhole someone who's maybe not able to afford those improvements. You're just kind of creating that cycle of not being able to do that.
Dave built, turned out pretty nicely. Just put that cul-de-sac in the. Right, you know, you live. Simmons when.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So there was vacant land and that's probably, what do you think that is? Yeah, but I mean, for vacant land. What he did by the cemetery, he put that cul-de-sac in, built what about twelve homes, twelve, fourteen lots if there's.
Go ahead.
Easy to put, rather than put streets in it, I mean, put a cul-de-sac in. That would be. Some of your lots possibly.
Yeah, there are some concerns with cul-de-sacs for our situation because cul-de-sacs, we have to balance those with fire safety. So I think we brought this up in the objective designs um standard discussion. When we build cul-de-sacs now, we usually like to limit them to be very, very short because we have seen um Paradise, a number of other um Santa Rosa. Small towns that did happen to build out with a lot of cul-de-sacs, Lake Shastina. Imagine evacuating from that. So we found that that's not the safest in terms of fire prone areas, but so what we recommend in those cases is that there's a connector at the end. To another through street where it's not a street for cars. But it's a fourteen foot wide uh pedestrian path between the neighborhoods with a bollard on it so that if people do need to. Evacuate, you can put the bollards down and use it in those emergency circumstances. So there are ways to do that where it's still affordable for the developer. But we're still making sure that it's a fire safe community. So that's why when cul-de-sacs come up, it's, it's a little. It is a balancing act in between the affordability and the safety piece. But again, it's, it's definitely less expensive than putting a through road. So that's basically the highlights of what we have in here. Like I said, we have a lot of uh state requirements around fair housing. So a new thing, if you saw in your appendix. In AFFH assessment, so appendix B is assessment of fair housing and this is a new requirement. In the state of California, what this does is it takes a look at our development pattern. Geographic pattern and determines if we are considered segregated or integrated as a community. And so we analyze for four characteristics, race, race and ethnicity, disability, income and familial status. Since we believe that, or the state of California has determined that these are very good factors for segregation within a city. Actually, a really interesting um statistic for the city of uh Waireca for familial status. We saw a sixty-three percent increase in, in male-led, single-parent households. That is a very different from the national trend. Typically, it's female-led. Single-parent households is, is more common. Which in Waireca, it is still predominantly female, single-family uh headed households. But we saw a very, very high increase in single-family male. Or a single-parent male. Which again, goes back to that affordability piece. If you only have one working adult also trying to. Have, also trying to raise their child, childcare is very expensive. And then the fact that they're doing that on their own with a singular income, most likely they are not owning their own home. Which there is kind of an economic piece to that as well, because owning your own home creates wealth, which is a long-term thing. What we basically found, um, looking at the different data and we have all of the maps in here for you, is that the city of Waireca is considered slightly segregated. Um, and basically we found that people who live in the northwest portion of the city have more resources than the rest of the city. And so we found that people who live in that area have a higher education attainment, higher income, um, and are predominantly white. And so uh, there is a slight um racial disparity and income disparity within the city. Although it is not as severe as say other parts of California, it is something that we do have to identify and address within the city itself.
Most forms that land now that was never. Finished being developed up in the state.
Todd Whipple.
You know, that, all that.
Over by Discovery?
That whole area where all the new homes.
Yep. Uh, he actually bought, he, he bought that with um, I believe, one or two other partners. Yep. So again, um, when we take a look at it, our areas that have the least amount of resources to themselves that are more ethnically diverse. And lower income is east of Interstate five. Um, and so that is predominantly due to the tribal presence that we have here within the city. So the Karuk tribe predominantly have their housing um on the east side of I five. So what that tells us as a city is as we move forward with the other elements of our general plan. We need to make sure that this eastern portion of the interstate, which also has a lot of vacant land as well for, for future development. We need to make sure that as we go through the land use element, that we're providing enough land use diversity in there to allow for the development of more grocery stores. To allow for the development of more healthcare facilities. Because one of the things we found is that people are not typically within half a mile of services or even a quarter mile of services in most of our neighborhoods. So if you live on the far western portion of Waireca, you are actually not within walking distance of any service. And so that becomes an issue as we have lower income individuals who may not be able to own a car. We have individuals who are older, who may not be able to walk more than a quarter mile or half mile for services. Or people again, with children who may want their children to go to the YMCA or other types of community services for their kids. We do not have enough mixed-use integration of our zoning code and that'll be something we'll have to address with our land use element. Now, the closer you live to Highway three Main Street, the more services you have available. What that also tells us is that most of our lower income or affordable housing should be built closer to Highway three where services already exist. So it's kind of a, a both sides of the coin. We need to integrate more of the services that people need into their neighborhoods. And we need to have more affordable housing closer to the services that we have. So take the vacant lot across from Walmart, for example, that would be an excellent mixed-use development. Or mixed-income housing complex with a series of apartment buildings, single-family homes. You know, quads, duplexes, that would be an excellent property because it is immediately adjacent to services that low income or aging individuals may need. Or people with disabilities as well. So again, someone with a um physical disability may not be able to walk more than a quarter mile to these services. So having them there. I haven't seen the sign yet. Again, I've been avoiding it. It just sold today. Yeah. Yep.
He sold it, you said?
No, I just bought the sign.
Yeah, yeah, it's been up there about a week and a half.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good property for that, but again, you know, it's zoned M one. So it's light industrial. Um, so again, that points to as we move through the general plan process, that's gonna be something that we keep in mind and that's why. Having this document done before we get to the land use element is excellent. Because it gives us a lot of really good data for where things are and what we need to ship for that zoning code and, and land use element. Cause that's where we get into the zoning discussion of what types of uses do we want where? And so we did find that out. And so uh, the other thing too is proximity to jobs. We found that even though the northwestern portion of Waireca is much more affluent, it has more resources. It actually has the least amount of jobs. There are very few, if any, um employers up in that area. Theoretically, yes. Um, but again, if you take it from the perspective of someone who may not own a car or be able to do that, it, it can be daunting, especially when you get. Our current weather situation. So today it was a hundred degrees. Having someone walk even a mile in a hundred degrees is very typical. So you know, I still drive to the YMCA every day for my lunch workout. It's not that far theoretically, but I'm not gonna walk that far with how hot it is. Um, and so we do have to bring weather patterns into the thought process. And that's why. When we talk about walkability, walkable neighborhoods and getting to and from services and jobs. A quarter mile is the maximum you want people to walk. The other thing we need to keep in mind is. Households, again, going to the grocery store are going to have to take their groceries back. Um, I don't know if you've ever had to try and lug milk or ice cream or refrigerated goods. Multiple blocks to your house. Um, I did in Iowa City when I lived there. It, it can be very daunting when you have four very full grocery bags and having to walk even a quarter mile back to your house.
If you walk to the Y in a hundred degrees, one need to walk out there.
I know, exactly. I'd get there, I'd be good and I get to walk back. The other thing too is we do lack a lot of, of transit availability. All of our transit stops are on Highway three as well. So if we do have individuals who work from the north and south side of Waireca, they are provided a decent. Transit offering, but if anyone is trying to get from the western or the eastern portions of Waireca, there are no transit offerings. East to west. So that's gonna be a big uh factor for people. Trying to get to work or get to services again. So again, the big one that we, we look at for this is B fourteen. Basically, this orange area has lower economic outcomes overall. And so. Basically, what's that, what that shows is people who live in this area have less advantages than other people in the uh darker green areas. Um, and so again, when we talk about. Creating a community that people wanna volunteer in, people want to contribute to. It's very difficult to wanna volunteer when you're living paycheck to paycheck. It becomes a very hard sell to work for free when you can barely afford your amenities. And so we go through that.
That's where builders would have a harder time making a profit to build homes in that area.
Correct, without subsidies. I think that's the big thing is. A lot of this is going to rely on grants and city efforts to improve the zoning code. We have gotten a lot of really good feedback so far. Most of the people who have called in about the general plan. And any rezonings want to upzone. So for example, I've gotten the most requests from people living on Greenhorn Road by the Greenhorn Reservoir. I, I've had about six property owners request that their zoning increase in density. Cause they'd like to build more housing on their larger lots in that area. And actually, that would be an excellent area to increase zoning because it is near a park. You're near a lot of employment areas, you're, you're near some public transit. You are near the hospital. That's another big sell for people is, is healthcare. Um, and so that is another area when we enter into the land use element and zoning code update, that we need to consider some increasing densities in those areas. Um, and then one of the programs, and actually we. Um, and then one of the programs, and actually, we have two programs total in here to make it easier for people to rezone their properties, who would like to upzone and do that. And so trying to make sure we we make a very conscientious effort to contact property owners during the general plan update and say, hey, we're considering this update. If we gave you the option to increase your density, would you like us to do that? And doing it for them rather than having them go through the whole application process like the one oh seven Turi Street. So that's something we will make a very, very big effort to contact people on is these subject areas that would be great for increased density. But I don't want to talk the whole time. We're already at six twenty-one, so I apologize. But so far, for planning commission discussion, I have the cost of housing, home development as a as a concern that we need to continue to keep in mind and address with all of these programs. And that was from Richard. Um, and I want to make sure we give a chance for our one public member. If if you want to, just like I said, if you can stand up at the microphone, that would be helpful.
Thank you for the opportunity. I think when I went through the meeting a little bit from the last time, and and the most surprising part is how much number of a percentage of homes that city of Irica has in last five or ten years. Everything is old, you know? There has to be efforts put in for the new housing. Yes, uh, cost is going to be constrained. I understand that. But with that cost, it's a different, people will have a different mindset. Because if somebody is a big builder coming up with making a lot of profit somewhere else in Sacramento, they might be okay making a little less profit here, but their 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 branding, their value, right, will go up. So i- it's just who is going to be able to do that? And finding that person is going to be, just not everybody's just going to do for money. Money is important and has to be there. But what are the other factors that somebody else will consider to come to city of Irica to build the the bigger housing? We need basically five hundred housing in next few years. And and I think what I discussed with Juliana is like people like me who are might be interested in doing small work groups to see how can we get that going, like especially with the couple of housing or duplexes or quadruplexes. That's where initially needs to start, right, until we have somebody big developer comes in. Until then, use what we have, start with the smaller developments.
Yeah, one of the things we talked about in our stakeholder interview is the city hosting a free quarterly developer workshop and basically talking about the funding opportunities for people. And although we're looking at the refunding, there is a supernova out, which is a notice of funding availability. Um, and it has a number of grants that are actually just for developers themselves. Um, and so we had talked about the city taking that time to open it up for developers to come in to talk about what do you need help with? You know, what can we make more efficient? And that can be something that we add is as a program as part of this, if you'd like. Is there any other programs or anything you'd like to see in here or anything you'd like the city council to know? Um, I have noted that you are pro-growth and you do want to see a significant amount of units built. And so I will share with that with them that there is support from the commission to do that. Um, is there anything else that you want me to communicate to them on your behalf?
Is there, is there any discussion on the balance of five hundred thousand dollars or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Are we going, when we say mixture? You know, five hundred thousand dollars ahead, we we don't have much of a mixture. By the time you've got four or five, you may have exhausted that, which you can fill much lower, much higher number of lower price products. And I'm just wondering what is the, is the ideal mixture or is there?
I think it really is determined on the community itself and what the needs are. Yeah, and so one of the programs that we have in the recommended draft is that the city investigate the feasibility, and it's not committing us to this, but the city investigate the feasibility of an inclusionary housing ordinance. And so what an inclusionary housing ordinance is, is a municipal code section that says when you have a developer coming in who wants to subdivide a lot or build multiple buildings of housing, um, at a certain point, a certain percentage has to be low income. So for, yeah, so for example, if someone comes in and wants to subdivide sixty acres into sixty parcels, it would trigger this ordinance to say, you have to at least set aside ten of those parcels for moderate income. Or you can subset, or you can set aside twenty of those for low income, or whatever number you would like to recommend. The other option that they have is they can pay an in-lug fee to the city to help the city fund developers to develop those houses. You know, it's been a mixed, it's been a mixed bag of results from, uh, so the state of Minnesota instituted a state regulation that requires everyone to do that over five, uh, five parcels. So every subdivision in Minnesota now, if you subdivide it into five or more parcels, they require at least ten percent of the units must must be affordable housing as defined by the locality.
That's fine if you do it statewide.
Yeah. But that has, um, that actually has been pretty successful for them. For the state of California, there are a number of mid-sized cities like ourselves and larger cities that have instituted these that are very successful. Um, and again, a lot of developers, like I said, it it really comes into the mix. So smaller developers who are used to building two or three homes, yes, that would be very difficult for them, but this wouldn't impact them. So I think if you were to set the threshold at if you're building ten homes or subdividing this into ten parcels, at least one has to be low income, you can set that threshold. And that may be a way to work with developers. Because again, most of your local developers are not going to trigger this because they're only developing two or three hearts.
See somebody come in and saying, oh, those fifty homes in this area?
Yes. We already have that interest, yes. Yes. Yeah, so this is, so this is. So the Siski Crossroads, RCHC, they're building fifty units for us. Oh, yeah. Yep. Yeah, so they will do that. So, um, so we have them interested. We have interest from another home builder, um, who's actually going to be building an apartment building in South County. They're interested in coming up to Waireca and doing a mix, we call them mixed subdivision projects. So again, it's a combination of, uh, single family houses, duplexes, quads, apartment buildings. Um, and that's the other thing we can do too, is it is we could require a mixture of housing types. So if you have a lot that's sixty acres, um, you can, in this inclusionary type of zoning code ordinance, you can also require that, oh, if you're going to subdivide your sixty acres, we would like to see a mixture of housing types. So you can build twenty homes, but we would also like to see three apartment buildings with four units, or we'd like to see two duplexes and do a mixture of those within the subdivision. And actually, those are becoming more popular for home buyers because people want to return. The trend is people want to return to your more typical nineteen thirty's style neighborhood. So your older historic area of the city is what people are looking to do more. If they have better crime and safety data, um, because you're a little bit closer together. You have a mixture of different types of households. They tend to be safer for children, they tend to be more walkable for better public health and getting our services. And so, um, people are not gravitating towards the nineteen fifty to nineteen seventy automotive based neighborhood types as much anymore. Although there are people who love that, who want more space, but a lot of people are looking to downsize or to have more of that community feel as they want to have that more, kind of like where Peter lives. They want to have that more like tighter knit type of community as opposed to every house looks the same. Um, and we have seen a huge decrease in the number of people requesting subdivisions that are the two thousand eight McMansion type subdivisions. Those are just not realistic for a lot of people to afford anymore. And actually, if we had that type of subdivision, one of the recommended programs they have now is to allow those people to turn those McMansions into apartment buildings. So that's actually been a very successful program for some of these developers who lost millions of dollars due to the housing market crash in two thousand eight. They're now repurposing these larger houses into apartment buildings, which are much more affordable for people. So we can be super creative. It's, like I said, it really just goes back to what you feel is appropriate for the community. And like I said, what we did for the inclusionary housing ordinance is we just said investigate the feasibility. It's an option.
When anybody comes in to build a house that's over twelve hundred square feet in a nicer area, there's a lot of people who like to move up into a different home. They they lived in the same location for the last fifteen years and they just like to move. They see nowhere near town to move back to.
Yeah. Yeah, we usually try to shoot for a vacancy rate of twenty percent of our housing units because theoretically, within the year, what people are doing are moving into larger homes because they're starting families or they're living with, uh, what we're seeing in trends now as well as multi-generational households. So a lot of people are either moving back in with their parents or as their parents age, they're moving them in with them, which is why the accessory dwelling unit is very popular. Is because your mother-in-law can actually live in the mother-in-law unit out back where you're all together. She can take care of your kids, that's free or reduced childcare with those factors. And so we're we're seeing the the nuclear household that people have held for so long, two parents, two kids.
And that's up to what, uh, on a lot, it's big enough, you can add up to what's eight hundred, twelve hundred square foot?
For an ADU? It doesn't matter what the lot is, it's twelve hundred max. Yep, so it does not matter, uh, we cannot limit anybody from getting an ADU. So if they have a single family home or a duplex, you can now have an ADU in California, up to twelve hundred square feet.
Just be smaller than that was a thousand before.
Nope, it's always been a maximum of twelve hundred for detached. If they attach it, it cannot exceed fifty percent of the livable state space, which we're not seeing people really do the attached ones. It's mainly people doing these little cottage houses out the back. Yeah. But from what I'm hearing, sure. Yeah, and so just to let everybody know, um, we're going to be closing at least this first round of comments on Monday. But we also are going to have a city council review and kind of similar type of discussion with them at a special meeting on August thirtieth. And then we, what we have to do is we have to approve a draft to go to HCD. So the Housing and Community Development Department. So they have ninety days to review, and thankfully, they're getting done sooner. So once it goes to city council, it will then go to HCD for review, and then it will return to you and the city council for final approval. So. Not typically. So it depends on what those changes are. If you got a bunch of the programs, yes, we will have to go back for review. And we are actually well within our deadline for them. So Siskiyou County jurisdiction's got an extension for when this needs to be done to February of next year. So we are on track to be done before that. So there is a little bit of time that we can do. So yeah, so. For what? So so if there's a bear, that is required. The other thing too is that there is no, there's no requirement or expectation from the state for us to fulfill all of these programs in eight years. There are some that, yes, we have to do based on, we have to take discrimination claims and things like that. But there's nothing, we will not get penalized if we don't do all of these programs.
Well, there's two hundred and fifty units, we should have to have within eight years, or their goal is?
Yep. That is our personal goal.
Okay, this is apartments that are being built, does that help with two hundred and fifty units being built up there?
I'm not going to include that for ours, but that will meet, that will meet our state.
But when we get there, Grant?
Yes.
Proppin' up, Will?
Yes. So basically, the state has told us, they think that we are going to shrink in size over the next eight years, which I think is incorrect. We have water, which is a big thing. If you're looking at Colorado and most of the western United States, I think jurisdictions like ours that have clean water, clean air, lots of water available to us, I think you are going to see more people become climate refugees and they're going to come here and and push it. And again, we have the jobs as well, so that's a factor that's pushing development and growth. So according to the state's function though, they believe that we will not grow in the next eight years. And so they only assigned us two units. So Siskiyou Crossroads will meet our state requirement, and I'm not worried about that, which is a good thing. But what I've done is, that's not realistic to what we need to do for our community. And just based off of what I've heard from everyone, and I mean, we all can, we all know that there's just nowhere to live and nowhere for people to continue to move throughout the community. And so that's why we've set our own goals.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't remember what the draft is, but I can make a motion to approve the draft. Oh, this one, okay. Make a motion to approve the draft two zero two three dash two zero three one draft, housing element for city council consideration.
Thank you. It's exciting.
So who put this book together?
Uh, this is Plan West and myself, so the people who did the presentations for you. So Plan West did most of the drafting, but, um, you know, Felicia's been going through it as well. And we've been offering guidance to make sure that it is a element that is right for Waireca. We don't want any boilerplates, we don't want anything that's standard for other cities. I wanted to make sure that it means our needs, so.
Did a very good job, and actually, it's not that hard for me.
A lot, it's a lot better than the.
Yeah.
So it's going to be exciting because the rest of our, uh, I I will say, the rest of the general plan is going to have more pictures, Richard.
I think you have a lot of pictures, I was just joking when I said that.
Yeah, so this is, this is kind of just a taste of what the rest of the general plan update will look like. And so we want to make sure it is readable for everybody. We want to make sure this is something that's accessible. Um, and we want to make sure that it is fit for Waireca. We want to make sure that it is. And that's why, again, for our next meeting, I really want to go over that vision statement because that vision statement sets up the rest of the general plan.
Yeah, no, I thought you did a good job, like I said, probably took me two, couple hours to go through it, but wasn't here as bad as I thought it was going to be. Like I said, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you. Great. We'll have another conditional use permit for a exterior modification to the Carnegie Library that will be at your next meeting. And then we will basically open up into the visioning workshop to talk about the vision for twenty forty-four. We don't have to decide on one at the next meeting, but I think it's something that we need to start solidifying what you'd like to see. So we'll bring all the results from our visioning survey and our visioning workshops that we've done. If we need to go out and get more, you can let us know. But I think we've got some good stuff to start laying a foundation of what we'd like, uh, the city to look like in twenty forty-four. And again, if you're not with us, we still invite you.
What is this, uh, Barnes?
Yep, yeah, we have those, they've been submitted. And, uh, the Barnes tentative parcel map, uh, has gone back to the surveyor with notes. So that should be coming back to us hopefully. And then we have a Whipple tentative parcel map that's being reviewed by PACE right now. So we just put it on to let you know, because if PACE gets done and it's all ready to go, that will go on your next agenda. But it has to be publicly noticed and heard by you guys, so we keep those on there as tentative until we're ready to go. They should be very straightforward. Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess I can, I can turn if anybody has a comment. All right.